This conference will now be recorded.
Good evening, everyone. It time is 7:30. This is October 22nd, 2020 work session. Want to get the audio okay so that I don't sound like Luke Garrett. Okay, hopefully that's better.
Yeah.
Thank you. October 22nd work session of the Allendale Mayor and Council. Welcome to everyone who is joining us via video and teleconference. We ask that you please mute your devices at this time so as not to distract from the business of the meeting. There will be several opportunities for the public to be heard tonight. In fact, there'll be three, and we will advise you at the appropriate times. So we will start with the agenda for the work session. Michelle, if you can please read the Open Public Meeting Act announcement.
Sure. In compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, the notice requirements have been satisfied. The meeting dates for the year confirmed at the annual meeting are posted on the public bulletin board in the municipal building, published in the record within the first 10 days of the new year, and copies are sent to the Ridgewood News and Star Ledger. Notice of this meeting by the October 16th, 2020 sunshine notice was sent to the record, Ridgewood News and Star Ledger, and has been posted on the public bulletin board in the municipal building and borough website.
Great, thank you, Michelle. Please conduct the roll call.
Councilwoman Homan is absent. Councilman O'Connell.
Here.
Councilman O'Toole.
Here.
Councilman Sasso.
Here.
Councilman Strouch.
Here.
Councilwoman Wilsinski.
Here.
And Mayor Bernstein.
Here. Thank you. Next is public comment. This is the first of three opportunities tonight for the public to comment. So anyone from the public wishing to speak, please state your name and address. For the record, you'll have five minutes to address the governing body. Looking out, is there anyone who wishes to speak at this time? Hi, Kristen.
Hi there, hi Mayor Bernstein, how are you?
I'm doing fine, how are you tonight?
Good. Hi, everyone. I'm Kristen Sarnes, 74 Heights Road.
Yes, thank you.
Having schooled. So I have a question for Councilman Sasso. Last night I went to the land use meeting, and I have a question about the procedure that that's going to happen there. It sounded like there will be several meetings for the purpose of discussing 22230. And I was wondering, some of the, I guess there were two architects witnesses, you call them, I guess, giving testimony to the land use board. Now, there were several times where they deferred the questions because maybe they didn't have the figures in front of them or whatever. When and how does the land use board and the public hear the actual answers to the questions that they deferred? Is there a process where at the next land use meeting, they will, someone will say, okay, these are the six questions you didn't answer, so let's go back to those? Or do the people who asked the questions need to re-ask them? How does that work?
So, let me start by saying, as you probably heard, I have to recuse from that, that meeting?
Yes.
Okay. So I'm going to be careful about my answer here, but.
I'm just really asking about the process. That's really all.
Oh, yeah, so, well, that's where I was going. So we're not talking about any specific application, we're talking about the process. So after 10 years, 10 years on the land use board, what used to be called the planning board, I can tell you that any board member at any time can go back and ask a question from previous meeting, as can any member of the public. So I think it's really, or, or any witness, or representative of that witness can bring it up. So, I think it's up to any, I think it's up to any interested party to go back to something that had to be deferred.
Okay, so it's really, is there someone on the land use board keeping track of it and then going back to ask? It's this responsibility of the asking party?
I, I think so, and I'll defer to our mayor, who's, as everybody probably knows, is an attorney, and, and since the land use board is a quasi judicial body, I would ask him if that sounds accurate. I believe.
And Councilman Sasso, thank you for that response. I, I wouldn't disagree, and I think Chairman Quinn, and I, I recuse myself as well, but I did listen, but I did think Chairman Quinn said that everyone, that the public would get a chance to be heard, be it in response when that, into question the witnesses or at the end. So I don't think there's any concern that anyone missed the, the opportunity. If the question was not appropriate at that time, I think there'll be an ample opportunity to raise that question later. I think Chairman Quinn and Attorney Bada both made that clear.
Okay, that sounds fine. I just was wondering if someone was jotting down the stuff that the witnesses deferred, or if you just, you just have to remember to ask again. So that sounds like that. Okay, thank you.
Sure, thank you, Kristen. Anyone else from the public wish to be heard? Okay, not seeing anyone. I'll close the meeting to the public. As you would know, there are two other times that we open it to the public. Now, for me, the highlight of, of tonight's meeting is, is a presentation. Certificate of Commendation. Shafik Zarif, correct? Was that good?
Yeah.
Okay. So it gives me, it's a great, great honor. And before I give this certificate of commendation, I just want to briefly set the stage for, for the public. On June 16th, 2020, Communications Officer Shafik Zarif answered a 911 hangup call. Upon callback, the caller was confused and stated that both he and a female had fallen down the stairs. The caller reported that the female was unconscious, and CEO Zarif determined that she was in distress and in need of emergency assistance. The caller could not provide an exact address, and their location only registered to the nearest cell tower. Through perseverance, asking specific guided questions, remaining calm, and relying on his training and experience, Communications Officer Zarif was able to determine their location and dispatch appropriate emergency services. CEO Zarif's actions not only prevented further inquiry, but he probably saved that woman's life. Shafik, you are a hero. And on behalf of the entire borough of Allendale, thank you for your professionalism and for answering those calls when needed. We get regular updates from Councilman O'Connell on the thousands of emergency and non-emergency calls that are received by you and your colleagues. It's comforting and reassuring to know that you and Allendale's team of dispatchers, police officers, volunteer firefighters, and ambulance corps members are all there, keeping us safe, coming to our rescue when called, most often during a crisis and often on the worst day of their lives or our lives.
What happened?
While dispatchers may not be the first ones thought of when public safety comes to mind, truly the first line of response, and we are grateful that you have chosen Allendale, and thank you, thankful for your service. So I would like to bring you up. Chief Sherb, if you would like to say anything, happy to, to hear from you, and Councilman O'Connell or anyone in, in the governing body. But I would also like to present this certificate of commendation to Mr. Zarif. Steve, would you like to say anything?
I'd just like to reiterate what you said. Congratulations, you've done a great job.
Thanks so much.
And we have said, and we've said, we call you on our worst possible day. We call you when nothing's going our way. Comforting for us to know, someone was born and raised in Allendale. Comforting to know, you pick up the phone to have someone like you, you or someone like you on the other line, who doing your job and beyond. And in this time, you saved a woman's life, largely a hero. You have all of Allendale.
Thanks. My pleasure, appreciate it.
You got a better backdrop if you work around here. You know, if you just keep the back there and the back, come over here, so I could get that, that backdrop is a much better one. That's right.
Great. Did you send me, did you send me that? Congratulations, and thank you. More, more than congratulations, thank you, I hope you have a wonderful night.
Great job. Take care, chief. Thank you, thank you. For everyone, that was the highlight of the meeting, so if you guys all want to go at that point. Okay. Now we move to the administration part of our work session. We'll start with the gender review. The minutes of the September 24th work and regular sessions are all listed for approval. Everyone was in attendance, so everyone will be able to vote. The minutes of the October 8th work and regular sessions will be listed on the November 12th meeting. Adoption of ordinances. The following ordinance, 20-16, will have a second reading and public hearing tonight. 20-16 ordinance to amend, supplement, and revise Chapter 237, Article 1, entitled Property Tax Refunds for Disabled Veterans. New Jersey law provides property tax, property tax exemptions for 100% disabled veterans and eligible spouses who meet the state's criteria. This ordinance amends the section of our code pertaining to these exemptions and updates the qualification requirements and the terms by which the borough may grant such refunds. So this is the adoption of the ordinance that we introduced at the last meeting. Consent agenda, we have 12 resolutions listed for approval. The bill list, I reviewed it, Matt and Amy, did you get a chance to go through that?
Yes, I just did, actually.
Okay, thank you. 20-233, establish the 2020 Halloween curfew. So we're going to talk about Halloween a little later in the meeting, but each year we establish a curfew for Halloween, and whether it's mischief night, goosey night, cabbage night, the, the night before Halloween, for the purpose of maintaining order. And this, this curfew applies to un, everyone under the age of 18 on Friday, October 30th, and Saturday, October 31st, and the curfew is 8:00 PM. Chief Sherb, do you have anything you want to add to that?
No, just do this, you know, so it gives a little bit of control of the two nights of Halloween.
Great, okay. Councilman O'Connell, Chair of Public Safety, anything you want to add to that?
No, Mayor, this is just an ordinance we do every year right around this time for Halloween, that's all.
Okay, thank you, great. 20-234, approve public health shared services agreement, County of Bergen. We as a borough continue to be satisfied with the public health officer, registered environmental health specialist, and related services that the county provides for us. As a, the current agreement will be expiring at the end of December this year. This resolution authorizes the borough to enter into an agreement for these services for next year, for 2021. The county has agreed to hold their current fees, which we greatly appreciate, especially in these uncertain times. 20-235, cancel taxes, disabled veteran exemption, Vincent Brennan III at 272 East Allendale Avenue. Our tax assessor has determined that Mr. Brennan is eligible to receive the disabled veteran exemption, and this resolution authorizes his taxes to be canceled accordingly. And just as a side note, we thank him, truly thank him for his years of service to and for our country. 23, 20-236, amend the 2020 meeting schedule. So due to the ongoing pandemic, the borough has decided that we will continue to hold our meetings via go-to-meeting teleconference for the remaining three mayor and council meetings of 2020. So this resolution authorizes this decision and gives the public notice of how to continue to join our meetings. 20-237, to amend fire permit fee in time catered events. So there's two which are similar, 2237 and 2239. Due to the pandemic, the Allendale Junior Football contracted with a food truck instead of selling concessions out of the Red Barn during their home games. Special events permits and foods inspections by the sanitarium are necessary, and the associated, the associated fee per code is $54 or 50?
54 for the fire official.
Right.
And 50 for the special event.
Okay, the special event is 50, right.
Yeah.
Since this is a borough sports program, the facility committee recommended that a one-time fee be charged to cover all five dates. Okay. 20-238, approve the change order number one for the 2020 paving program, DNL paving contractors. DNL paving won the 2020 paving program contract back in July. They completed the paving, and our borough engineer has requested a change order increase of $24,933.35 to account for the actual quantities of work measured and performed. 20-239, amend special events permit fee in time catered events. So similar to the resolution 237, an inspection of the food truck by the fire official, as well as the fire permit are required for each date, but the facilities committee has recommended only charging a one-time $54 fee, which will cover all five dates. 20-240, authorize refund of 2020 tax overpayments, which we have periodically. This resolution authorizes refunds of 2020 tax overpayments on several properties. And last, 20-241, authorize solicitation of proposals for storm drain inlet repairs as needed. Our borough engineer has recommended that we solicit proposals for storm drain inlet repairs to be addressed on an as-needed basis. 20-242 and 20-243, these, we did these together back in June and August, and so now we are extending them. Back in June and August, as you may recall, we authorized resolutions to temporarily relax certain provisions of the borough code pertaining to outdoor cafes and temporary signage in an effort to help our downtown businesses, as well as those wanting to advertise their support for COVID-19 relief efforts. As the public health emergency still exists, and some of the governor's executive orders restrictions are still in effect, we're extending our prior approvals that were set to expire on October 30th to November 30th. Councilman Sasso, I don't know whether you want, you spoke wonderfully about this back then, I don't know whether you have anything to add, other than we're just extending, we're rolling forward. Did you want to add anything to that?
No, but thanks for the opportunity.
Okay.
I'm good.
Good. So now that's the agenda review. We still have some time, so I'm going to go into committee reports. Councilman O'Connell, would you like to give your report?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. As far as calls into headquarters, we had 12,898 as of this afternoon. 911 calls was 1,257. Fire department calls was 134. AVAC was 311. We did have an entry exam, started a process for possibly hiring an officer. We had 100 applications last Tuesday, 91 showed up. That process will be, the top 20 will go to physical activities, a physical test for the 31st, I believe. Out of that 20, the top 10 will go to an interview process with the police. And out of that, those 10, the top five will interview with the mayor and council, and we will have the other five resumes to look at. As far as Halloween, we had a couple of postings sent out that we will not be closing Dale Avenue and New Street, and if everybody wants to celebrate Halloween, that they should follow the CDC guideline. And I think that's about it, Mayor.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ed. Councilman Sasso, would you like to give your report?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So the land use committee was due to meet on the 20th, which I guess was Monday, right? And, but we had, we had to reschedule because there were some conflicting other meetings and stuff, so, but we did have, we did have a short meeting Wednesday morning, because we had to address some urgent resident issues. So the land use committee met just for two or three issues, which we addressed to, I think, everybody's satisfaction. So that was good. I'm going to reschedule our land use committee meeting for a date soon, hopefully next, well, next week, probably, sooner than later. Also, the land use board met, of course, it met yesterday, but also it met on Monday. And on Monday, my, or the land use committee's amendment to Chapter 181 was presented to the land use board for consistency with the master plan. We received a letter yesterday, which I just saw today, from Borough of Allendale Land Use Board Council, Christopher Bada. And I'll make this short, but basically, the land use board has conducted a statutory review of ordinance 20-17, and that's Chapter 181, and that it's consistent with the borough's master plan. And that ordinance, by the way, is an amendment to short-term rentals, which extends short-term rentals to pools, playgrounds, driveways, and other things which has become necessary in this COVID world, where there are part, you know, properties being rented out by the hour for parties and pools. And it's, it's not acceptable, really, to the quiet enjoyment of Allendale, even, even when it's not a pandemic going on. So that will come back to the mayor and council for second reading in November. And that's it on land use, but Councilwoman Homan asked me to read the water committee's update.
Thank you.
If I may.
Please, please do.
So of course, she, first thing she says, sorry to miss the meeting, you got to love, got to love Liz. The next water committee meeting will be next week, Monday, October 26th. The Fairhaven, Fairhaven tank is currently emptied, probably one of the water pressures a little lower, and the interior is being cleaned, which is always a good thing. The tank should be back online end of next week. We are planning to have another virtual water meeting in November. The focus will be, and I have to tell you, the last one was very interesting, and Councilwoman Homan did a great job, she's perfect for that kind of thing, with her background in biology and, and science. The focus will be emerging contaminants and the economics of water. So I'm personally looking forward to that, so I'll be there. And she also mentions that she's spent a great deal of time with Councilwoman Wilsinski and the team on the 22230 project, and she's hopeful, and we're all hopeful, that it continues in a positive direction. Thanks to all, and that's it.
Great, thank you, thank you, Steve. Amy, would you like to give your report now?
Sure. 220, 230. The remediation is coming along, according to the SIP plan. We are in the last phase of it. There's a few more test spots that are actually out in the lab, and once they come back, and they come back clean, we will be filling in the actual hole and putting in the backfill. And as we know, the closing is contingent on this remediation, so we'll be really happy to put that part behind us. We also do have a grant in for a portion of the cleanup. As most people know, we had our land use board meeting last night. A lot of questions came up about the municipal building. We are also planning a town hall, which is going to be Thursday, the 29th, at 7:00. It's going to be very, we realized last night, I think people really kind of need the global picture, and they really need to see kind of where we were and where we're going, and we need to connect the two. You know, a lot has happened in the past couple of years, but I think this will be super encouraging, and I think everybody will get a lot, so we encourage everybody to join, and, you know, just to, to bring everybody up to speed, and also to make people realize the, the reason that we bought this property. And the reason is to preserve the character of Allendale, to, to control the growth of Allendale. So it is actually a very good thing that we have this property, and that we're able to develop it on our own terms. You can read in the paper every day, hundreds, sometimes thousands of units in all of these other towns. So I know sometimes 70 units may seem a lot to people, but in this, the whole scheme of things, and the whole look, global look of New Jersey, it's actually not at all. So, so I'm looking forward to that on Thursday, so spread the word, we'll definitely send out some more correspondence on that. Our streetscape project is coming along wonderfully. We are moving along, I, I don't want to say we're ahead of schedule, but the, we're almost done with the pavers on the, on the south side, I'm sorry, on the north side. And then the demo is on the south side by the Dunkin' Donuts, moving along nicely as well. I have to say that the contractor is great. I, I meet with him almost every other day, and they're very cognizant of our merchants, and right now, especially the AB&amp;G, since we're coming upon that part of the project. So they're, right now, they're planning on continuing the pavers from Franklin Turnpike back up the street, and, you know, they're going to actually strategize that, looking at the weather, trying to figure out how they can do it in the best way, so merchants can get, people can get in and out of the restaurant. So we're really grateful for that. The way that they've made the sidewalks too, they're very passable, even though the pavers aren't on there. So I think the pavers look fabulous, I love them. Our lights are coming in, in February, and they will be actually, hopefully, installed that winter. So by spring, we should have a nice new look, and then we'll be working on, hopefully we'll have the grant for the next phase to continue the, the loop around the clock. Just a reminder that this whole entire project was with a grant, $662,000 grant for the three different grants, three, three, three grants for this first phase. And another reminder that all the trees that we took down will be replaced, and the net-net is that we will actually have more trees in our downtown. Another fun project is our playground. We actually met with the rep today. We are kind of narrowing down on a playground area. We're going to have a little set for the, for the little guys, the two to five-year-olds, and then the five to 12. So it'll be really nice transformation in that area. The fence is going to be removed, and then kind of rearranged a little bit, so the space is a little bit more efficient. And that was also with Bergen County Open Space Grant. And that is it for me.
Thank you, thank you for all your work.
You're welcome.
We still have some time, Councilman O'Toole?
Absolutely. You know, I'm a man of few words, so I'll make it quick. All that much to report this evening. Administration, Finance, and HR Committee has not met since our last meeting, but we've had a few discussions regarding some ongoing contract negotiations, some upcoming contract negotiations, personnel issues, financial issues. All, although things are pretty good. So that's about all I've got for this evening.
Great, thank you very much. Councilman Strouch, we have a couple of minutes, so maybe, I'm not rushing you, but we still have some time, so if you want to give your report.
Yes, and I'm sure I can squeeze it in, in the remaining minutes. The DPW committee report, I think I mentioned at the last council meeting two weeks ago, so this may be a duplicate. Oh, I'm sorry, no, no, I didn't have any sound, my mic didn't work, I could hear you, but anyway. Dan Richards and the DPW continue to, you know, prepare for winter. Crestwood is, you know, closed, drained, and put away, and there's always a little bit touch-up going on at Crestwood because of the year-round use. But now the bulk of our, of our concern is the additional time that's going to be spent when the snow starts falling. But the Dan Richards and the DPW, they've got all the plows hooked up, there have been a lot of repairs done to the trucks to make sure that they don't break down during the winter. According to the fat squirrels in my backyard, it's going to be a cold winter. So I'm glad that the DPW is, you know, taking the action and getting prepared. For those of you who like to put your leaves in the brown paper bags out by the curb, you know, Allendale has started the curb site pickup. You can go to the borough website and download the leaf pickup schedule. It's broken onto the west side of the train tracks and the east side of the train tracks. And if you struggle to know whether you're on the east side or west side, Northern Highlands is on the west side of the train tracks, and Arcadia and Franklin Turnpike is on the east side of, of the train tracks. And if you continue to be not sure, I'm sure somebody at the Borough Hall can help you. Yesterday, Mark Savistano and I took a field trip to Sussex County to check out their recycling center, a beautiful, probably a five or 10-acre site, or actually probably much bigger, because they actually have a landfill on site. But we went for the recycling component of it, and they have taken recycling to the next level, and they're recycling many materials that were not, one of which is styrofoam, and that's really what brought Mark Savistano and I there yesterday. But it was an informative trip. But it was an informative trip. Not just because we met with the head operator of the facility, Renee, but also we met with the inventor or creator of this foam cycle machine that somehow converts styrofoam into a usable raw material that there's a buyer for in New Jersey. So Mark and I are going to get together with the other recycling advisory committee members to discuss this field trip. And then we'll be reporting our findings in a little more detail to the DPW committee. But I just wanted to give everybody a heads up on that. You're welcome. Yeah. And then, of course, after that, there was the land use meeting last night, which I thought Kevin Quinn, the chairperson, did a wonderful job handling. And I do think that the public was, the questions were good. Their patience when they would unknowingly ask the witness a question that they couldn't answer. Because in the early phases, the testimony, the questions from the public have to be limited to the testimony given by the witness. Anything else, they just, they're not allowed to answer. And that's why the attorneys would often step in. But the public will have multiple times to speak. First, after the witness has given their testimony, they can ask questions about the testimony. And then when all is said and done, the public has the right to ask, you know, any questions at the end and voice any opinions at the end. So there will be a chance to resolve that. And that kind of defers to Krista's question from earlier this meeting.
Right. Great.
And I apologize, 801. So I am done with my report. Thank you, Ari.
That's okay. Thank you very much, Councilman Strouch. 801, so please forgive my, that I've run late. I will request a motion to return the work session.
So moved.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Second, O'Connell.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great. Okay, everyone stay put. We're going to roll right into a regular session. The time is 8:02. This is October 22nd, 2020, regular session of the Allendale Mayor and Council. Welcome to everyone who is joining us via video and teleconference. I ask at this time to please mute your devices so as not to distract from the business of the meeting. There'll be two opportunities during this meeting for the public to speak. We'll advise you at the appropriate times. So next, under, Michelle, please read the Open Public Meetings Act announcement.
In compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, the notice requirements have been satisfied. The meeting dates for the year confirmed at the annual meeting are posted on the public bulletin board in the municipal building, published in the record within the first 10 days of the new year. And copies are sent to the Ridgewood News and Star Ledger. Notice of this meeting by the October 16th, 2020. Sunshine notice was sent to the record, the Ridgewood News, and Star Ledger, and has been posted on the public bulletin board in the municipal building and Borough website.
Great. Thank you very much. Would you all please join me in rise to salute the flag?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Michelle, please conduct the roll call.
Sure. Councilwoman Holman, absent. Councilman O'Connell?
Here.
Councilman O'Toole?
Here.
Councilman Sasso?
Here.
Councilman Strouch?
Here.
Councilwoman Wolsinski?
Here.
And Mayor Bernstein?
Here. Thank you very much, Michelle. Approval of minutes? I would request a motion to approve the minutes, the September 24th, 2020, work and regular session minutes.
So moved.
Thank you, Amy. Second?
Second.
Second.
Great. I don't know who it was. Steve. Thank you, Steve. Michelle, please conduct a roll call.
Councilwoman Holman is absent. Councilman O'Connell?
Yes.
Councilman O'Toole?
Yes.
Councilman Sasso?
Yes.
Councilman Strouch?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wolsinski?
Yes.
Great. Thank you. So next is public comment on agenda items only. So anything on the agenda, if anyone from the public wishes to be heard? Not seeing anyone.
Colleen Brennan from 272 East Allendale.
Oh, sure, Colleen. I can see your name, but I couldn't see your face. So sorry if I.
Oh, that's because I have my camera off.
Okay.
I am commenting on, of course, the resolution for the tax exemption on our property. I also noticed that there is an ordinance to approve not issuing refunds for proper, for the tax exemption dating back to the time that we purchased our property on April 1st. Our application was approved by the tax assessor on July 30th. Prior to your ordinance is up for tonight's consideration for not issuing the refund dated back to the date of our closing. I've had constant communication with the tax assessor and the tax collector about our resolution going up for consideration. I was originally told that it would be up for a meeting in September. And then I was told to do not make that meeting. Then I was told again, October 8th, it did not make that meeting. Coincidentally, it is up for tonight's meeting, which is also the same time that you are approving an ordinance not to issue a refund for us dating back to April 1st.
So, Colleen, I can answer that. Director of Operations, Mr. Kishner Ken, and I know I spoke to CFO, Liz Amair, on this, and I know that there were some emails back and forth. My understanding, so it's always been Allendale's policy to go retroactive to the date of application. And that's what it is. The date of application was July 30th, and you are receiving a refund from that date going forward.
Yes, but we are not getting the refund dated back to the date of our closing, which according to state statute, we are allowed to have prior to the introduction and approval of your ordinance 20-16, which is also coincidentally this evening.
Well, so I don't, I'm looking at the, at 2237-1, what it said before. I have your letter to me or to the mayor and council, discussed it with the CFO. And I think she, Gina Whitmack, and Angela also responded. So yes, it's not going back to the date that you acquired the property. It is going, you are getting a refund back to the date of application, which has been.
Yes.
Or a policy. And I do want to say, with the utmost of respect, and which is why, I don't know whether you heard me at 7:30, when.
No, I did.
Okay, so at 7:30, when I went over, and because, as I said, our tax assessors on 20-235, our tax assessor has determined that Mr. Brennan is eligible to receive the disabled veteran exemption, and this resolution authorizes his taxes to be canceled accordingly. And we absolutely thank him for his years of service to and for our country. So there's, if I, if I, everyone who does what.
Okay. I agree with you on that, but in accordance to the statute NJSA 54,4-3.32, which permits the governing body to issue a refund on taxes collected on a property which would have been exempt had prior claim and writing been made pursuant to 54,4-3.30, which my husband has been 100% disabled since, I believe I wrote in the letter either July or June of 2018. Now granted, we just moved into town April 1st. Now, the ordinance that you have forth this evening is amending and making it universal that he would not be allowed that exemption. Our.
I don't think we're amending it. I don't think, we're not taking it away. We're clarifying.
No, you're clarifying that he only gets the exemption from the date of our filing, which we would have done earlier if we could have gotten driver's licenses due to COVID. But we could not because DMV was closed. So it prevented us from getting the necessary documentation to get our application approved.
Okay. So, and we're, I'm, there's not an announcer, I mean, that's talking over you. I hear you. If there was a way that we could say that everyone who fights for our country doesn't pay taxes, financially, we can't. We have a procedure that's been in place for many years. And this is just not clarifying, this is clarifying what our procedure is. And I apologize if COVID slowed things down. I apologize if you're not pleased with it. But this is what, this was the recommendation, and this is the action that the mayor and council in the Borough has taken.
All right. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else from the public wish to be heard? Okay, so.
Ari, is that just for things that are on the agenda or anything?
That's just for things that are on the agenda. So one last time at the end, where it's on any item.
Thank you.
So close the meeting to the public at this time. Ordinance for second reading and public hearing. Right, am I up to the right spot?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Michelle, please read the title of the ordinance.
Sure. The following ordinance published herewith was first read by title only on October 8th, 2020,
Anyone who's in the public, if you can please mute your device, we're just getting a lot of background noise. So if you can just make sure you're on mute.
Sure, I'm going to start over.
Okay, thank you.
The following ordinance published herewith was first read by title only on October 8th, 2020, and posted on the bulletin board of the lobby of the municipal building and Borough website. It's ordinance 20-16, an ordinance to amend, supplement, and revise Chapter 237, Article 1, entitled Property Tax Refunds for Disabled Veterans.
Great. Thank you. I would open the floor for public comment on, specifically on ordinance 20-16. Not seeing anyone from the public, I'd request a council member to make a motion to move, to pass and adopt on second and final reading ordinance 20-16.
So moved.
Thank you. Notice of same being published according to law. I would request a second.
Second.
Thank you, Steve. Michelle, please conduct a roll call.
Sure. Councilwoman Holman is absent. Councilman O'Connell?
Yes.
Councilman O'Toole?
Yes.
Councilman Sasso?
Yes.
Councilman Strouch?
Yes.
And Councilwoman Wolsinski?
Yes.
Great, thank you. Next, we move on to the consent agenda, which I reviewed in the work session. I would request a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Thank you, Amy. A second?
Second.
Second, O'Connell.
Great. Thank you, Jim. Michelle, please conduct a roll call.
Councilwoman Holman is absent. Councilman O'Connell?
Yes.
Councilman O'Toole? Councilman O'Toole?
Matt, are you there?
Yes.
Yeah, it's just a little delayed, but he said yes.
Councilman Sasso?
Yes.
Councilman Strouch?
Yes.
And Councilwoman Wolsinski?
Yes.
Great, thank you, Amy. Okay, any unfinished business? Any new business? Committee reports. Okay, we got through the six committee reports. I will give my mayor's report, and then we'll go to our staff reports. COVID-19 update. With the rise in reported cases around the county, state, and country, I want to remind everyone to remain vigilant with mask-wearing, social distancing, handwashing, and other precautionary practices. Allendale continues to be on the lower end of reported cases with 153 total presumptive positive cases through October 20th. This has not happened by accident. It's a result of our collective diligent efforts. New Jersey's Health Commissioner announced last week that the entire state of New Jersey has moved into the moderate activity zone, which means that the latest trend for the virus is more widespread. Thankfully, the state's daily numbers are still far below the spring peak, and the daily new death rate has remained flat. Our numbers in Allendale have held steady. We want to keep it that way. That being said, by many accounts, this could be a difficult winter with a spike in the numbers. We will continue to monitor this. We will continue to make the necessary decisions as to how to move forward, as to how the Borough operates. We will continue to keep the residents informed, up to date, and safe. For up-to-date information on the coronavirus, the state's website, covid19 nj.gov. That is the best place for accurate and up-to-date information. You can also find information on downloading the COVID-19 Alert NJ app, which contains tribal advisories, safety guidelines, and types of benefits and assistance, including disconnection, utility disconnection relief that is available to residents and businesses. The county and Bergen New Bridge Medical Center have partnered to provide regional community mobile COVID-19 testing. There are two upcoming dates open to Allendale residents. Monday, October 26th, at the Franklin Lakes Community Center at 1 Visakhapatie Way, and Wednesday, October 28th, near the Ramsey DPW at 1 Erie Plaza. The saliva test will be given to those with and without symptoms between 9:00 and 2:30 PM. There'll also be a limited number, limited number of flu shots administered. And you can go to the Borough's Facebook page for more information. Bergen County Cares Program, Bergen County has announced an extension to submit application for their cares program until October 30th at 5:00 PM. Funded by the federal government through the CARES Act, this one-time program provides some economic stability to small businesses negatively affected by the pandemic. For more information and to apply, visit bergencountycares.org. Councilman O'Connell reported about Halloween. We're following the CDC guidelines there on the Borough website. Everyone, please be safe and take the necessary steps to keep your family safe during this time. The Holiday Observers will be hosting their annual costume parade in Crestwood Park this year to allow for proper social distancing on Saturday, October 31st. Participants are asked to arrive at 3:00 PM with parade staff off at 3:45, rain or shine. For more information or to pre-register, visit holidayobservers.org. Cybersecurity. New Jersey Attorney General's Office has put out helpful information on cybersecurity, which we posted on our Facebook page. With increased online activity for school and work, it's important to protect ourselves and loved ones from cybercrimes, especially our children and those who may not be very familiar with computers. Free paper shredding day. Did anyone report on that yet? No? No, I didn't think so. Okay, free paper shredding day in Allendale. Due to the pandemic, our annual free paper shredding day wasn't able to be held this spring. But I'm happy to announce that we have rescheduled it for Saturday, November 14th, from 9:00 to 1:00 in the Borough Hall parking lot. For more details, visit our website or our Facebook page. This is open to all Bergen County residents. I also want to publicly thank the BCUA for offering this program to municipalities each year. National Prescription Drug Take Back Day is October 24th. The Allendale Police Department is participating in the National Prescription Drug Take Back Initiative in partnership with the DEA. Residents are encouraged to bring unused, unwanted, and/or unexpired prescription drugs to police headquarters on October 24th from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. This is, though this is the date for the nationwide program, the police department actually has a box for this purpose in their lobby, available 24/7, year-round. Just one more example of Chief Sherb and the entire department keeping our community safe. So Chief, thank you very much for that. Fourth quarter property taxes are due on November 1st. Payment can be mailed, made online through our website, or dropped off in the secure mail slot at Borough Hall. There's a grace period through November 10th, but if not paid by then, interest due will revert back to November 1st. COVID-related expense reimbursement. The Borough submitted reimbursements totaling $27,994.69 through the Bergen County Cares Program. And to date, we have received almost all of it, $27,489.56. We're just waiting for some vendor checks to clear, and then we expect to receive the balance, the $505.13 balance. Separately, $37,750 in reimbursements were submitted to FEMA, and we anticipate that we will be receiving their customary 75%. And we anticipate that we will be receiving their customary 75% reimbursement, with the other 25% coming from BC Cares. On behalf of the governing body and the residents, thank you to all the employees for their dedication to the Borough and for keeping meticulous records. I know we discussed this, you know, the whole way through, keep track of the records. We're going to hope to get reimbursement, and now, and it's happening. So we're truly thankful to the employees for making that possible. And I offer our sincerest gratitude to Alyssa Mayer for undertaking this huge task and coordinating with everyone. Library Board, along with Councilman O'Toole, I attended the monthly library board last week. My, our continued thanks and appreciation to Patty Dursow and the whole library board for all that they have done and continue to do at the library and for our residents. Lastly, the general election, as everyone aware, this year, the governor and New Jersey Legislature had made the general election a mostly vote-by-mail one. Our Clerk's Office put together a comprehensive voter guide, which can be found on our website, social media pages, and was in an October newsletter, which explains the new process. There is a lot of information out there, hopefully not as much now. But I encourage anyone with questions to reach out to our Clerk's Office to get the correct information. That's it for my mayor's report. Staff reports?
Ray? Thank you, Mayor. As everyone is aware, the 220-230 project is at a very formative and busy stage. So much of our time, the two weeks since our last meeting, has been subsumed by work on that project. I do want to comment on something that Councilwoman Wosinski said. Just a reminder that at the inception of this project, there were, there was the potential for some 300 to 400 dwelling units on that site. And one of the goals of the municipality was to take the property away from the prospect of a builder's remedy. And we were able to utilize that planning technique in our negotiations with the Fair Share Housing Council, which reduced the number of units that Allendale was obligated to, to build in the community by not only planning properly, but actually showing the realistic opportunity of those units, six low and modern and three for first responders at that site. So there were actually multiple benefits in the residential component there that shook it off the builder's remedy market. It also allowed us to negotiate with Fair Share Housing Council. So I think that's an important thing to remember, since that always goes back about two years ago. I think that we actually were in those negotiations.
Right.
We've been working with the Clerk's Office on various Oprah requests. I think as Councilman O'Toole mentioned, we have negotiation sessions both ongoing and upcoming that we're working on with the committee. There have been various personnel matters that have worked on with Mr. Kishner. And there are several ordinances that are presently in the hopper that we're working with the council on revising.
Great, that's it, Mayor. Great, thank you very much, Ray.
Ray, thanks for bringing that up about the fair share housing. And that is one of the highlights that we're going to talk about in the very beginning of the, you know, virtual town hall on Thursday. We're really going to just really explain to people what we are facing as municipalities in New Jersey under the fair share housing, and how Allendale has really done everything we can do, one being one of the only six municipalities that were certified in the third round, which really did allow us to have a lot of flexibility. So I just, thank you for reiterating that. And that is definitely something that we're going to be talking about at the town hall. So everybody's super clear on that.
Yeah, and I think our real benefit there was that, you know, the notion that they wanted to see was that you realistically planned. Allendale was able to bring to the table not only a realistic plan, but an actuality. And I think that that really allowed us to benefit the community as a whole in, you know, avoiding spot zoning of low and moderate income housing units, and really to satisfy our obligation at a singular site.
Right, thank you.
Absolutely.
Great points.
Ray, I just think to thank you too for bringing that up. And possibly in our town hall meeting, it might be good to really clarify and show what the actual material impact of a builder's remedy lawsuit really means to a community.
Agreed.
That's a very serious lawsuit.
Right, agreed.
We know.
Okay, Lisa's not here. So Ron, would you like to give your report?
Everything's been covered, Your Honor.
Okay, great, thank you very much. Okay, so we're nearing the end of the meeting, but public comment open to the floor to the public on any matter. So I think someone I reached out before as to whether or not this is the appropriate time. I think this would be the appropriate time.
Hi, this is Kevin Benoit from- Am I good? This is Kevin Benoit from 85 Donnie Brook Drive.
Hi, Kevin.
How are you?
I'm doing fine. How are you, Kevin?
Good. I'd like to read a statement. I went to the recycle center on Saturday, and two Borough employees were standing at the entrance to the compacters having a conversation. They did not have masks on. Their positioning meant that anyone who was dropping off recyclables had to pass within a foot of them. I felt very uncomfortable, even though I was wearing a mask. The two employees, however, did not appear to be COVID-aware at all. Their positioning put them and the residents at risk. This is the second time this has happened to me when I was there. Now, I know some people don't want to wear a mask, and that's fine. The employees could have just easily stepped back a couple of steps and have been safe for everyone. So I would ask that the Borough employees who are not wearing masks maintain social distance. I do not believe that being COVID-aware and taking a couple of steps back is such an imposition or too hard a burden for the town's employees. So what happens if one of those employees, God forbid, did get very ill? First question their lawyer would be asking is what steps did the Borough take to protect their safety? Unfortunately, the answer now is that they were given a mask but told they did not have to wear it. No training, no safety protocols. That is not a good situation for the town to be in. So I realize that safety policies and procedures are up to you, but I have a suggestion that may protect the employees, the resident, and the town. And here it is. So you know how in the supermarkets, they have those lines on the floor that keep social distance? Why don't we do the same thing through the recycle center? If the employees are inside the line, then the residents have to wait outside the lines until the employees step out. If the residents are inside the line, then the employees have to wait outside the line. This seems like a very easy and simple way to protect everyone. Of course, the employees will need to be educated and given training for this to work. I hope I've been helpful, and I know this council is very interested in keeping everybody safe, as I've heard all night tonight. So I thank you.
Thank you for your time and your statement. Anyone else from the public wish to be heard? Okay, not seeing anyone else. I would request a motion to adjourn the regular session.
So moved, Strouch.
Thank you, Jim. Second?
Second.
Second, O'Connell.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. That concludes our meeting.
All right, good night, everyone.
Good night.